Yes.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Select Board Meeting of December tenth, two thousand and twenty four. I'd like to welcome everyone, including our younger group. It's wonderful to see you here as well as everybody online. I think this is awesome. And I will start with public comment. I would ask that you identify who you are and where you live. And I also just want to remind folks that there is a time limit of two minutes. And you're welcome to speak on any topic that is not on the agenda. So is there any public comment? I'll take from in the room first. Or online? See, and hearing none, we'll move along. Board member updates and comments. Hector.
Number of people approach me excited about the start of the EDIC, looking forward to meeting starting and what they can do. The comprehensive plan is moving along smoothly, and we did a few focus groups on it. Did one last Thursday, and we're doing one this Thursday. Get people's opinion on some of the priorities of what's going to go on in the comprehensive plan. And the advisory committee is moving forward. We're looking into how to implement the things to do to get the plan moving forward and also discussing plastics in our town, and plastic bags.
Sounds like what's happening.
Nothing from me.
The Affordable Housing Trust meets tomorrow night. But we're, we actually have a draft RFP that has been through a number of hands now. And so we're getting close to issuing in RFP for the six housing units out on the ready.
Really?
Long awaited.
Yeah, I mean, that's been a long process, and a lot of work's been put into it. So I'm really glad you're here, but that's moving along, actually.
Yeah.
That's great. All good news.
I had a meeting last week with a couple of members for, with Sustainable Stowe, the principal of Hale Middle School and the principal of Center School about composting in Center and Hale, and kind of just a preliminary meeting as to what would be involved there, what some of the challenges would be. Kind of, everybody has some kind of fact-finding things to do at this point, and we'll come back after the new year, sort of see what some of the challenges are going to be. You know, kind of meeting with other school districts, seeing how they handle it. And again, seeing, yeah, I think it'll be, we'll see, we'll see how it goes in the new year.
Yeah. Do you, do you feel it looks promising?
I do, I do. I think it's gonna, it's gonna involve a lot more community involvement. I think it's, it's, it definitely is going to involve more volunteering from the community. We definitely, it's not something that can, is just going to be on the schools. So there are going to be some challenges, you know, kind of helping the kids to learn that new behavior. So like, they're short, for example, the, the middle school's already short-staffed lunch monitors, anyway. To introduce a new behavior to middle schoolers is going to require some volunteers being able to come in and, and help with that. So it is just sort of identifying that, that kind of stuff ahead of time before sort of going in gung-ho and rolling out a program like that. But, because you really don't want to, you just want to make sure that they're, that it's successful for the kids.
Yeah, you don't want to set it up for failure.
You don't want to set it up for failure from the beginning, so, I think, but I think everybody's interested.
Have you reached out to Black Earth yet at all?
No, 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 yes, absolutely. They are the ones who we are, that's the, that's the one, yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
That's great to hear. My update with the town hall reuse. We did meet last night. We have tabulated the surveys and and how folks feel they want the direction that we need to go in, which seems to be more of a cultural center point. How we get there, we need to wait and see. We've asked for assistance from our town administrators as far as assessing the building so that we're not shooting in the dark, so we actually know what's really going to be involved, because it was pretty extensive from the previous group. Thank you, Megan, and your colleagues. And.
Courtney.
Courtney.
And, but since that time to now, obviously, things have changed even on a monetary level. So we really need to look at how something like that can be achieved and, you know, the steps in a process. But we're getting ready to move into that so that we can get a report that will come back to this board. Okay?
Cool. That's exciting.
And the only other thing I did want to mention is we received a communication from a resident who had a situation that was very concerning. And our police chief, Mike Solis, stepped in and personally took it on his shoulders, and it thankfully came out to a very successful ending. So I just really want to thank Mike publicly for his dedication, as always, to service to the folks here in town. He's an individual that, when he says he wants to lead by example, he really does. And it's not just, you know, hollow words and statements. I mean, he really did put forth a real effort on it, so I just wanted to give him kudos for that. And next on the agenda, we'll go to the town administrator's report.
Thank you. I would like to start by thanking everyone who came out to the special town meeting last week. Even though we had a brief agenda, we had over a hundred voters and some spirited debate. So thank you for those who continue to participate in our process. Final reminder that wreaths for wreaths across America will be collected through this Thursday, December twelfth, and the wreaths will be placed on Saturday, December fourteenth, beginning at eleven a.m. at Brookside. Wreaths may be left on the bench at four fifty-three Great Road. Last week, the DOR approved our fiscal twenty-five tax rate at seventeen point four-two, seventeen forty-two per thousand, which was what was presented by Kristin at the classification hearing. Just a reminder, of that forty-five cent increase, thirty-nine percent is attributable to the first borrowing of the new high school. So people will see an increase in their taxes, and thirty-nine cents of that increase is for the high school, the first thirty million dollars that was borrowed. Our new public EV charging stations are being installed this week. So one set will be at Pompo and the other at Stowe Community Park. So we're hoping to have the systems up and operational at the beginning of the year. So stay tuned for more information on that. And lastly, our holiday hours for the town offices are posted on our website and our door, and will be posted to social media next week. So if you're looking to do business with us around the holidays, just keep an eye out for our holiday hours. That's it.
Thank you. Now it is my pleasure to go into the next, which is the appointment of Daniel Rowley to the position of DPW Director. And I'll take a motion on that.
Okay, Mr. Chair. I move to appoint Daniel Rowley to the position of DPW Director for the Town of Stowe through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, and subject to reappointment thereafter.
Second.
Any discussion? First of all, I would like to ask Danny if you'd like to say anything.
Just that I'm excited to, at this opportunity, excited to be here, been wholeheartedly impressed with the leadership of the town so far, and I'm looking forward to working with you at the beginning, at the start of January.
And any questions, comments from anybody?
May I offer a brief summary for those that haven't read the packet? Not in the room, obviously. For those watching at home. So Dan comes to us with twenty-five years' experience in all aspects of public works. He has a background in cemeteries, highways, roads, water and sewer. The search committee, which was myself, Erin, the planning director, and the police chief, were all extremely impressed, not only at his resume and his credentials, but his interview. We found him very down-to-earth. We thought he had a great personality, would be a great fit for us. Since his name was released on Friday on the agenda, employees here have been calling counterparts, reaching out. Everyone has had such positive things to say. Even the members of our DPW have called their counterparts, and he's coming from Shrewsbury, have called Shrewsbury. They say great things about him. We are really excited to have him coming on board. I think he will really be a great addition to the town.
Great.
I can't wait to talk DPW with you. I love that stuff, so we'll, I'll introduce myself. Talk dirt. Salt, dirt, Pompo's, all that stuff.
We were just chatting about PFAS in my office.
Oh, yes, PFAS, there you go. Thanks.
Okay. Any further comments?
No, I'm excited. You sound, you come well recommended. It's great.
So then, all those in favor of appointing Daniel Rowley? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. But the record show it is unanimous. Welcome aboard. Congratulations. And it, as I said earlier, advanced condolences.
You don't have to wear a bat anymore.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
He's going to stick with us the rest of the meeting.
You are, folks. Well, it's not a terribly, we're going to renew a lot of victuals licenses, but, you know.
But the next part, I think, is kind of fun and exciting.
Yes, the next part will be great.
We have with us guests from the Neshoba Regional High School. Four students to discuss the community needs with the board. So everybody's on the hot seat. Would you like to introduce yourselves and what town you're in? I'm not going to ask you to the addresses, but.
I'm Elizabeth Gross, and I'm from Stowe.
Welcome, Elizabeth.
I'm Millie Bowler, I'm from Stowe.
Millie?
I'm Ian Horahan, I'm from Lancaster.
Lady, yeah.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Kearney, I'm from Stowe.
Yeah, Stowe, okay. So, the floor is yours.
So me and Millie were working together on our project, and one of the, like, one of the questions we had was, what are the main focuses of the select board at the moment? Like, general, I guess.
Wow, that's a pretty broad question.
It is a broad question.
I mean, like, what is the select board currently doing to, like, resolve any issues in the town, I guess?
As issues come up, we review the information available and try to find what's the most equitable solution for the people involved, as well as the town. All of the discussions have to be done in an open meeting format for, for open meeting laws and such.
Our role is policymaking. And so we actually don't have jurisdiction over a lot of things, so things will, questions will come to us, and we may say, you know, we have this opinion, but this is really the, the purview of the planning board or the Conservation Commission or something. So there's also some of that, we can't always directly affect things.
I guess, like, could you tell us more about the comprehensive plan? And we're interested in knowing exactly, like, what you guys plan to do with that.
Hector.
She's on it, too.
I figured I'd put him on the hot seat.
That's fine.
So the comprehensive plan is actually an initiative of the planning board, and.
See what I mean?
And I'm the select board representative, and Courtney's also on it, but I was the.
I represent the Conservation Commission.
Conservation Commission rep. The, whatever initiatives that the select board can do, as Courtney mentioned, the select board is policymaking in general. So whatever policies might be needed in order to implement the comprehensive plan, we'll discuss them and take a look at what's the best way to do them, act accordingly. As far as other parts, the majority of the comprehensive plan, that's more going to the planning department and the planning board, and also for the town administrator to look into ways of implementing and moving forward with the planning, with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything you'd like to add to that, Courtney?
So I'm assuming you know that it's a ten-year plan that is put together?
How do you, like, exactly plan on, like, achieving the goals in the comprehensive plan? Like, do you have, like, a, I don't know, like, a list that you're going to go in order or something?
So actually, the part we're at right now, so the plan is, we started by looking at a very abstract goal for the next ten years. And then we, from there, we devised core themes. So there are five themes within that overarching goal. And now we're working on strategies, which are the part that can actually, actually be implemented. And so the, currently, the consultant and the, and the committee are working with technical experts, some of its, a lot of its town staff, who are weighing in on the strategies and deciding whether they're, whether they're good strategies for the Town of Stowe. And once, once they've decided on a set of strategies, then those are there as guidance. It's, it's really a guiding document. It's something to be referred to whenever a decision in a certain area is to be made. And so it's, we have an open space and recreation plan. We have housing production plan. And the comprehensive plan is kind of an overarching plan for anything that those particular plans don't cover. But they all work together.
Thank you.
I have a question to add to that, perhaps, is that this, one of the things the selectmen have been doing is working with the, what's the energy committee's name?
Green Advisory.
Green Advisory, and they've come up with different ways to make Stowe more green. Is that also included as part of the comprehensive plan, any energy-related or climate-related discussion in there?
Yeah, yeah.
Being on the Green Advisory Committee.
Oh, thank you. Why don't you add to that?
Well, we've been able to make sure that the comprehensive plan also goes in accordance with the Climate Action Plan that the green advisory committee put forward.
So the Climate Action Plan was approved by the board, select board?
Yes.
So that's one of the things we'll do, is we'll get, receive these different plans, and we'll officially approve them. And then the committees work on implementation. And the Climate Action Plan was actually very, one of our, one of the more exciting things that we worked on. Do you want to just summarize it, really, Courtney?
It takes a look at the different things that the town can do to improve and achieve the state mandate of reducing fossil fuel consumption by thirty percent by 2030. So we're running out of time, but we looked at all the things that the Town of Stowe could be doing. More energy-efficient buildings, municipal buildings, encouraging energy-efficient and electric homes to be built in the town, encouraging the use of electric vehicles, and overall, looking at the different aspects of the town and what could be done to improve all those.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you mentioned about, like, the housing and, like, how you're going to have more, like, electrical, like, kind of powered housing for that. Like, is that why, like, there's all those new settlements building over at, like, the golf course, where the golf course used to be? And so you're, that's kind of like going along with the plan, I guess?
That was part of the, yes, the whole group that was working on the new homes in the Stowe Acres area, they were following all the initiatives. There was something else before the comprehensive, the Climate Action Plan that the select board approved, which was to encourage more energy-efficient and electric homes. And the people working on the new homes there in the Stowe Acres area were following those initiatives. And I should also add that the comprehensive plan, the Climate Action Plan was something that the select board approved, but the comprehensive plan will go before town meeting in May to be approved by the entire town.
So the select board, in summary, we get an awful lot of information that comes back to us. And then we, in many instances, spearhead the initiatives and move things forward. I can tell you that sometimes this board has lively discussions of how that moves forward, because with five people, we can have five very different ideas. But we do work well together, and we're able to come to a consensus to be able to move those initiatives, and if necessary, to formulate policy, to put those forward, to achieve the goals that you were referring to in the comprehensive plan itself. So we try to drive and spearhead things as needed. And we do that in very close collaboration with the town administrator in her office. Because we can sit up here and really be grandiose, but the nitty-gritty work comes from her folks.
We also had, like, questions about, like, the environment, and you mentioned that, like, the comprehensive plan goes, like, hand-in-hand with the environment and, like, conservation. So what is, like, Stowe kind of doing to, like, improve the environment and just, like, keep conservation lands like the farms in Stowe and, like, everything, like, alive and, like, still running, I guess?
Let's see what you've done.
I was like, which one of you wants to talk about that?
Let's share it. Yeah. You go first.
You want me to go first? So I'm also on the Conservation Commission here in Stowe. And the Conservation Commission is responsible for the management of a lot of open space in Stowe. We have a lot that we've been buying over the past thirty, forty years, I think. Those of you who live in Stowe, you know, we have Marble Hill, and we have the town forest, and we have different parks. And one of our goals is to, there is a responsibility to, to managing open space properties. Like, when we have big storms, we've been out there for hours and hours identifying dangerous trees, widowmakers, paths that have been blocked. So there's the hands-on care, there's also invasive species management. In terms of farms, we have deed restrictions and conservation restrictions on several of the farms, like Small Farm and so many farms.
Harbor Hill.
Harbor Hill, right, as examples. And one of the things in Stowe that we're monitoring is soil health with respect to droughts that we have had, and how do we maintain healthy soil, manage for healthy soils, healthy forests? Because I'm sure you guys have been studying that forests play a role in carton sequestration. And how do we ensure that the forests that we have are healthy enough to contribute to that function? If you've been walking in some of our forests, you're seeing that there's a lot of tree fall, tree damage, invasive species coming in, and I think it's something that the town will have to pay more attention to. So, and then in terms of water supply, we're all on wells. We need to make sure that we have proper volume and quality of water for all the residences in Stowe and the businesses in Stowe. And so that's something that, that actually is important with respect to the board of selectmen role, because when we have a significant drought, two, three years ago, we actually had the board of health come in and talk to us about emergency backup when people, if and when people's wells were to dry up, how are we going to supply them with water? So that's a quick summary, you can talk more?
Thank you. Covered a lot.
Okay. So, you know, to the, to the extent that you guys are looking at getting more involved in your community, there's always roles in these boards and commissions for associate members or full members. And the only other, the other thing I should say about the Conservation Commission is we regulate the Wetlands Protection Act for the state, the State Wetlands Protection Act. So we also have a regulatory permitting process, as well as just sort of an overall planning, open space management responsibility.
Okay, thank you. And I guess, like, one more question we had was about, like, it kind of just came up about the water. So I know, like, when we had to do, like, a parent interview to just kind of, like, ask their opinion about how Stowe was doing, I guess. And one thing my dad mentioned was, like, the water over at, like, the Stowe Plaza. Like, has that been resolved? Because I know there was, like, an issue with, like, Dunkin' Donuts shutting down and, like, other businesses. Like, was that, like, could you tell us more about that, and, like, how you fixed it?
I don't think it's fixed, but I would. You want to answer it? Because I, I'm not up on the latest, but it's an excellent question, you guys. Good question.
To my understanding, there's actually a very ample water supply for the, for the plaza there. And they also have a capacious disposal system. So it's not supply and disposal that's the problem. The, excuse me, the owner of the plaza owns a number of properties, and they all have municipal services. And so stuff just works, and you don't have to think about it. Here, it's private, well, private subject system. And when there was difficulty, they weren't on top of it. They just didn't understand that this was something that they could malfunction on, because they have many properties. It didn't come to their attention in a timely fashion so they could remedy, seek out and remedy the issue in a way that could serve a coffee shop. So we have two coffee shops there, Duncan and Emma's Cafe, who, I used to run a coffee shop. You cannot run a coffee shop without water. At five in the morning, you got to have water. And, you know, your landlord probably isn't in his office at five in the morning, so. That's primarily what happened, I think.
Okay.
Do you have anything to add to that at all?
No, so I would, yes, so the problem is fixed. So it was, it was their distribution system. So the pipes that bring the water from their well to their individual units was failing, and that's what was taking a long time to get fixed. So they have fixed that. Regarding water in the general area, we, as the town, are underway with a study that should be presented to this board in January of the feasibility of adding additional water to the Lower Village area for the business, the businesses. So we are sort of taking a look at what we can do to help the businesses down there, but the specific issue with the Linear Plaza has been resolved.
Okay, thank you. Did you guys have any questions, or do you think?
Yeah, so I'm partners with Leah Jones, who couldn't be here today, but she also lives in Stowe. And we kind of focused on, like, economics and Stowe, so we, that's actually, like, a great last question, because we were asking about the businesses in Stowe. So we were wondering if you guys are aware of, like, how many vacant buildings are in Stowe, and if there's any, like, future plans for those businesses or spaces?
Yes, we are very aware of the vacancies that exist. And we've actually just finished formulating and now have a complete EDIC again, which is.
Oh, sorry.
It's a committee specifically to address the issues of the economic aspects and, and to see how we can best help the businesses that are here. But they're also looking to see how they can attract new businesses coming in. We're actually at a very exciting time, because the Masters Academy just received their approvals. And the academy itself is wonderful, but what it can do to add into the town as far as periphery businesses is a very exciting opportunity. Bringing more students in, parents, might be nice to bring a barber shop in, back into town. You know, there's areas where we might be able to add a sandwich shop or something, you know. You know, there's areas where we might be able to add, uh, a sandwich shop or something, you know, so, so there's. Some real possibilities and EDIC, I think, um. Will probably begin to take that on first and will be reporting back to us, um, in that process. So that we can really continue to spearhead, um, the ongoing, uh. Progress, I guess is the best way of putting it.
Awesome. Um, I was also wondering if there's any like. Um, like laws in place that do assist businesses in Stowe so that they are able to like. Continue working if they do have an issue like the water issue.
Well, we are guided through our charter and the bylaws that we have on the books. And those are usually done through our town meeting process. And. I think in general. I would say our bylaws are not really super specific. Um, and I think that's done so it doesn't necessarily hinder a business. You, you don't wanna make a bylaw that is so restrictive that you can't have businesses come in and I, and I think. Town meeting, the folks are. Informed and educated, um, in a lot of those concepts and will move things along. To assist in whatever way we possibly can without coming in conflict with mass general law, obviously.
Um, and our final question.
Just, there's one thing to add to that. Were you gonna say anything?
I was.
You go first then, if you don't cover it, I will.
So, um, we did, the Planning Board recently brought to town meeting and amended. The zoning bylaw for Lower Village, so for that whole district. And what they did was they, um. Kind of made it more permissive. So what they want to encourage is. More. Different kinds of, of, uh. Pedestrian friendly access in the plaza. So there would be buildings closer to the street with small shops that you could see from the street. There would be a different parking configuration with perhaps more trees, maybe some, some seating areas where you could.
More like a lifestyle center instead of a strip mall. So that really does encourage. Both environmentally, great benefits as well as economically, it gives more flexibility to the, to linear.
So those are, that's a, that's an incremental, I mean, that's a. The zoning only says what's possible and so then you still need people to come in and do, to make those changes to property owners as they. Are inspired. The other thing I was gonna say is the comprehensive plan. Discussions the other night did mention, um, simplifying or, or, uh. Creating a, a way to, to navigate our permitting, um, more easily for small business. So that. Whether it's getting a new permit or opening a business, it's a little bit more accessible. It's, many towns, it's not easy. To start a business.
And, um, my final question is, like, as we know, there's like a lot of positives to having this, like, many businesses in Stowe. But do you guys find that there might be like a consequence to having too many businesses? Such as like traffic, cause I know we have like a law where you can't have a drive-through because it could cause like a blockage in the roads.
I think it's a balancing act. I, many people have commented that they would hate to see us. And I won't mention the other surrounding towns, but there's a few surrounding towns that they feel that tipping point was really. Gone over, um, and has negatively impacted, um. The character of the town as well. A lot of folks in Stowe like Stowe because of the feel of Stowe and because of what Stowe has to offer. They're not looking to become a natick. They're not looking to become, you know, uh, something of that nature. But people do realize and understand it really would be nice to have more businesses in town as well. So, uh, yes, I think there is a balancing act and I think, uh. I mean, I think I can speak for the board. All of us really are aware of that and really try to work very hard to. To always kind of check that balance.
There's also a tax implication for, uh, so. Residents pay. More than ninety-five percent of revenue that we have to work with in the town budget. And so having more businesses to support us and lessen our tax bills is not a bad thing.
Yeah, I think that's everything we had to ask.
Great questions, guys. I mean, seriously. Definitely, um, and I really wanna thank you for coming in and taking the time. For a project like this, especially outside of school hours. So I commend you for being willing to do that. And for coming in and, uh. Um, do you have any last comment or anything that you wanted to make or?
Uh, yeah, thank you for taking the time to like address this with us as well.
Thank you for coming and asking all these great questions.
Hopefully we'll see you on some boards and commissions. But enjoy the rest of your, your school year before the holidays, so. You're welcome to stay, but now we just renew. This is the other thing that we do. We renew. I know, but I'm just saying, if they wanna stay, they can watch us renew all our liquor licenses.
Which is all business oriented.
All business oriented.
Fortunately, I do have to go.
Um, okay, next on our agenda is just, uh, discussion with our school committee representatives and. They're here.
Leah and Scott are on.
Hi Leah, hi Scott. So I'd, I had asked and I had reached out to have you come in just to kind of get a sense of, you know. Where we're, where we are and the budgetary process. I mean, we've got, as you heard, our tax rate and everything else. Um, and folks in town are. Asking questions. So I said, well, let's see if we can't just sit down and just have a conversation and, and see, you know. Where the thoughts are, uh, with you folks and, uh. You know, has anything at all been discussed or earmarked at this point? I'm sure it's still probably preliminary, but.
Uh, so I can start. Uh, first I'll just introduce myself. My name is Leah Vivarito and I obviously live in Stowe. I'm the chairperson of the school committee at this time. Uh, I also have Scott Powell here with me tonight. And he is also a member of the school committee. There are two other members who couldn't join us and they send their regrets, but thanks for having us tonight. Um, so I believe that everybody might be aware that annually we hold something called a budget, um, workshop. That occurs, uh, usually at our first meeting in January. And so this, um, this year it's gonna be on January fifteenth. We're looking at making that a virtual meeting, although right now it is scheduled as an in-person meeting, so I can update that. Later at our next school committee meeting. That budget workshop is usually the first time the school committee is provided with any kind of preliminary. Um, budgetary requests. And it really does act as the first ask of the different departments within the schools. And so it normally comes in at a pretty high number. I mean, you guys have done, gone through the cycle many times like I have and Scott has. Um, it, it starts out at kind of a high number and over time, considering revenue shifts as those become clearer. And, um, by paring down various things or just using certain efficiencies, the number usually. Gets down to, um, a reasonable increase. I think over time, Stowe has experienced about a, on average, three percent increase. Um, for the school budget. And so that's kind of where we have historically been and I don't think that it's gonna be different. But I think, um, Denise might be meeting with Kirk. If you haven't already Denise, met with Kirk and all of the TAs to kind of open the conversation in that way. And so if you can add anything to the conversation, please feel free.
Uh, so we meet monthly. We really haven't gotten into budgetary information yet. Uh, I think our next meeting is next Tuesday where I would expect we'd see more preliminary numbers. Just for full disclosure, we have had conversations mainly about the town of Bolton and the financial situation that they are facing. Um, and so we have talked collaboratively about how even as Lancaster and Stowe, if there's anything we can do. Uh, with regards to even making payments on the budget, uh, at a different, uh, mechanism than Bolton. To try and allow for them to not have to pay sort of money upfront of collecting it on the tax rate. Um, so we are sympathetic to their situation and I know you'll be hearing about that as you go through the budget process. But we haven't seen anything, uh, definitive or even preliminary at this point.
One question I just had, um, with the, uh, the signed agreement, um. There was put in in the district budget, uh. To, uh, consider, um, proposition two and a half. And, um, is that something that, you know, we're gonna really be looking at as well to, to try to keep it? Again, because Bolton this year, but as you know in the past Leah. We've all in the different towns have had to face some difficult times and, uh. So is that gonna be brought in, um, in the process now, um, to try to keep it within the bounds of the two and a half?
So my understanding is that Bolton is looking for a prop two and a half override this year. Um, they have certain constraints that are unique to their town and so that's something that they're gonna be looking, I think, to do. Uh, Lancaster had to do it last year. Stowe's been fortunate in that we haven't been in that position and hopefully we aren't, we don't find ourselves there. But I think what you're talking about is the regional agreement. It does say that when the school committee. Which is, because we're a regional school district, we have this, um, autonomous. Um, nature where a regional school committee is responsible for creating the budget. And then we present it to the towns and I think over time we've built a really good partnership in trying to work. Hand in hand with the town administrators so that we understand the constraints those towns are facing. The regional agreement says that before we vote on that budget, we should make sure or just be mindful. That whatever budget we vote has impact on the towns and their ability to budget for their departments as well. So yeah, that's definitely on the mind, not only of the school committee members, but of our superintendent Kirk Downing. So he's done a really great job of, um. Building partnerships with the town administrators and with the finance committees or advisory committee in Bolton. And making sure that everybody is kind of working on this together so that there are no surprises late in the process. We do definitely have, uh, one of the initiatives that Kirk is engaged in a lot and he just talked about it at the meeting the other night. Is that, um, we have a couple of problems that are brewing at the state level. Problem number one is. Um, what they're allowing out of district placement. Special education schools to charge, the percentages that they're allowing them to raise their tuitions at is, uh, really hurting. Us because every child who needs services that are provided at an out-of-district placement, their tuition is raised, is rising. And the, um, state is not reimbursing at the number that they need to. And so there's a lot of, um, lobbying that's happening right now to increase those reimbursements. We're always looking for more transportation money, but the other thing that Kirk is, um. He's joining forces with other superintendents around the state and this is especially true for regional districts. Is that they're trying to alter the chapter seventy, um, formula that decides how much local aid we receive. And the way that the formula is currently written, it puts regional districts at a disadvantage. It's also putting us in what we call hold harmless. Position that is decreasing our funding because our enrollment is declining. That puts us in a club of about three hundred other municipalities across the state where, uh, where chapter seventy funding was leveled. Last year and we expect it's probably gonna be leveled again this year, even though our costs are rising. So, you know, we are incredibly mindful of all the constraints, uh, both local and state. So we look forward to working with all of you and I know Kirk is looking forward to working with Denise and, and the other TAs and the FinComs. To make sure we can get to the number that we need to be at and still provide a high quality education that the people of Nishoba expect.
Yeah, I, I, I would like to echo that. We would like to be able to work with you as well in that process. I definitely feel the high level of quality of education is extremely important, but as you know, seventy cents of every dollar. In our budget goes to the school already and. There is some concern. There's not a whole lot on the town side, not here, but also in the other towns. We don't wanna have to start cutting services in the towns either, so it's, and I know it's always a balancing act. So if there's a way that we can all kind of work together. To, to satisfy what we need to do in the schools without hurting, uh, the towns and their budgets. We're more than willing, I think, to step forward in that process and to, to try to work with it, um, as much as possible. I do understand what you're saying and I absolutely agree. Chapter seventy has not been. Fair, put it that way, to the districts, um, over time and it's really beginning to show now more so. So, um. You know, all I can say is talk to legislators and yell at them loud. Um, to get the changes that are necessary as well. So if there's anything we can do on that side as well, um, please let us know.
Will do. Yeah, Scott, would you wanna add anything to this? I don't wanna, um, leave out the chair, um. Scott is actually the chair of our Budget and Warrants Subcommittee and so he has quite a bit of expertise as well.
Not much. I mean, just to point out, you know, I think we're all mindful of trying to get the most bank for our buck. As far as the school budget is concerned, so, you know, we're, we're aware of the, the, uh, two and a half limitations and. Doing everything we can there. Um, it is early in the cycle. We're just, tomorrow we have a Budget and Warrants Committee meeting tomorrow. We're just getting our first look at that meeting at the, um, capital plan. That's like the, that's like our first peak in next year's budget, the first time data, like we're gonna get. Like Leah said, it'll be January before we start seeing a full budget and even that'll be very preliminary as far as the numbers are concerned. So, you know, we're just now getting into the budget season, as it were, so we'll, we'll spend the next three months. Working through the budget and so, you know, anyone who is interested and wants to have, lend their voice to that process. Now is the time to start coming to B and W or school committee meetings so that you know what's going on and you can. Provide the feedback you think we need to hear to help, help it go on.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I would say, I would say too, um, one of the goals of our Director of Finance and Operations last year. And I think it was, um, and it, it was ultimately one of the goals of our superintendent, which we evaluated him on at an exemplary level. Was to create a, a finance transparency page and so for the first time really ever. Uh, they have pulled together on the Nishoba website, a finance and operations page that provides a tremendous amount. Of contextual information that is mostly historical, but. If anybody's looking to build their expertise on how the budget is built, what the budget book looks like in previous years. All of it is posted in that one location so that you can go and search that out. There's also other, uh, there's actually a, an in treasure trove of information on this transparency page, but. It'll also help you see how our revenue sources are calculated, where all the money comes from. How we are then asked to calculate local aid based upon, you know, um, you, we basically. Get from the state the amount of money that they're gonna give us that they think that we need to run our schools. And then it shows how we get the remainder because it's always more than the state thinks. So there's just a, a ton of tools there, teaching tools, that if anybody wants to learn more about the way that the budget process works. Um there's also a very cool video about the um regional agreement. And you can learn about how the assessments are managed um through that video as well.
Okay, great, well, thank you.
Yeah, so Budget and Warrant Meeting, I guess, is the next piece and then um we have the TAs are meeting monthly, so Denise is a great asset. I know that the regional agreement asks that the superintendent meets with all the FinComs. In what used to be called the tri-town um meeting, but the the FinComs all come together and meet with the superintendent. After the budget um workshop. And then of course uh the budget hearing is gonna be done in the middle of March. But there are a lot of times where we can come together and discuss either formally um in your meetings or in our meetings or. Um in you know, through email, if you guys have any questions, you can always reach out to us.
Great, thank you and if there's anything you need, don't hesitate to reach back to us, please. Um and seriously, again, if it's if there's something that we can do, supporting a legislative act for some of the changes that. You're looking to do letters of support from this board or whatever we can to throw in our voices um. I'm sure all of us would be more than willing to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that um a lot of the conversation that we've had in previous years is that. This coin has two sides, one side is the spending, of course, and the costs that are associated with maintaining high quality educators. And and educational programming, um not to mention the facilities that the town has just approved. Uh but the other side of the coin is revenue and so how can we drive revenue sources and drive our tax base up? So that the taxpayers and homeowners are less responsible for that sort of thing. So I was actually really interested in the conversation you were just having with the students who are clearly engaged in a civic action. Project, which is part of the programming at the high school. Um where you're talking about economic development and EDIC and and trying to get more businesses into town and bringing the Masters Academy. And all the economic development that can be driven in that regard as well. And so that that other side of the coin, I think, is equally important to talk about revenue source. And how we can lift the burden from homeowners and try to drive more revenue without changing the character of the town, of course. So I appreciate all of your efforts in that regard too.
Thank you, we appreciate that, I'm sure. Alright, well, I appreciate you guys coming and taking the time and I realize it was a bit premature, but at least it gave us a chance to. Just kind of touch base and hopefully we can continue um the conversation as the process goes along.
Yeah, happy to come back anytime, so thanks guys.
Alright Leah, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks Scott. Okay, and next is the crest request for the menorah lighting. Uh Lenny Golda and Rabbi Polter. Do you wanna?
Hi.
Hi.
Well, this is um maybe recall, we did this last year, we had a menorah lighting at the town common. And um Rabbi Polter and his wife were gracious enough to bring potato pancakes, you know, for people and. Um I think some of these people were actually came to the.
I was sorry, it was lovely.
Nice, um we'd like to, you know, do the same thing again this year. Um one added thing, you know, cause we have a little more time to plan now. Um you know, Hanukkah starts December twenty fifth, that goes to um January first.
Correct.
And so what we were wondering is if we could um Rabbi Polter would, you know, be willing to. But you know, to keep the menorah there, to start it on the twenty fifth and keep it until, you know, January first and. Um somebody, probably me, would come and, you know, like add a a light, you know, each night. So that would be an added thing this year, in addition, we'd like to do an event like we did last year. Um and we were thinking either the uh Thursday, the twenty sixth or Monday, the thirtieth, one of one of those two nights. Um in terms of, you know, what might work out if, you know, uh we haven't finalized which night it would be, but it would be one of those two nights. And um same same kind of um format as last year. And um so that would be basically what we'd like to do. Having the menorah for those eight nights would be nice on the town common because people, you know, in one seventeen could be driving by and they could. You know, look at, you know, the the light, you know, with the other lights that are on the common.
Well, last year we decided on it, it was already halfway through Hanukkah. We just came here and whatever and we just put it up for like it was towards the end, so what. Basically, Lenny is saying is I would set it up before Hanukkah, it'll be there the whole time. Sure. And each day he'll just come and, you know, turn on the next switch. And then on one of the nights, leaning towards Monday, probably, we'll have our little half hour event and. Like we did last year.
And and everybody's welcome and it's nice to see, you know, people from here come and, you know, attend and participate as well.
Sure, um. I don't have an issue with any of it, I'm just trying to narrow down the actual dates so that when we make our motion.
Sorry, I was, you said Monday, so the thirtieth?
The Monday.
The thirtieth?
And can I ask a clarification, so your request is town common, I believe you mean lower lower common, correct?
By the mall.
Yes, so not town common, you mean the lower commons, okay, just cause that's what we put in the motion, I just wanted to make sure that that's what you wanted.
Is where you had it last year?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. On your space, it's also next to the flagpole, there's a there's an electrical outlet there by, so, yeah.
Yes, there it is, that's right, so that so we're talking about Monday, the thirtieth, okay.
I mean, this year it might be a lot of people away because it's, you know, between Christmas and New Year, so whatever, but it is what it is, I don't. I don't plan when it happens.
No, it's not the thirtieth.
The thirtieth would be the.
It's the event.
The twenty fifth to January six.
Right, the event January first.
Yeah, the twenty fifth is January first would be the eighth.
I'm sorry.
Because it's a multi-day thing, so Jen's December twenty five. Okay, you could change it to the twenty sixth. Yes, so this has to be.
But there are events.
Right, but we're we're approving the lighting from December twenty to December twenty fifth.
Okay, yep, okay.
Ah, so placement.
The motion, uh I yes.
So the placement would be before the twenty fourth or twenty fifth, I mean, maybe the twenty fourth, I put it there. And then I would pick it up uh probably on Friday, I guess.
The second, the third?
Third, the third.
Uh yeah, Friday the third or late on Thursday, I just wanna be, if you wanna the farthest and the earliest date. So the earliest would be the twenty fourth and the late at for putting it up. And the latest that'll be gone will be by Monday, the third, possibly the second, but if I don't, you know. So just be standing there for that, you know, week and a couple of days, which is fine. And the lighting, the event will be on the thirtieth, the evening.
Right.
And if I could add just one more thing, um you know, hopefully this, you know, can be like a an annual event. And assuming it's just similar, I would think it would just be similar every year, we could just maybe. I I mean, I could call, you know, the select board office and, you know, just give the the date, you know, that we're going to be doing this. If that would be okay.
I would say it requires a vote of the board annually because of the date, it's an event, so they would have to vote on the event and how long you wanna keep it up there.
It is classified as an event.
Do you want to take a quick one?
So, that's.
Okay, we we, you know, we vote on that.
You don't need to come here every year, but they should have to vote it, so you could send in the details and they should vote.
Send it in as we can do without.
There's like a permit, like there's a form, like you could do, as long as you have the dates.
Sure.
So are we voting also on an event permit?
I've, it's.
She's, they're writing it.
I have a, I would say it doesn't probably, it probably doesn't rise to the level of an event permit, um.
That's what I thought.
So if they could certainly use one to submit the information for you to vote, but it doesn't, I wouldn't say it rises to an event permit.
With your tree lighting, did you do an event permit?
My tree lighting was me going there privately and plugging in the tree, there was no event. Sponsored by any organization or group whatsoever, people wanted to join, they joined.
I mean, I can read my own handwriting, yes.
Plugged in the tree, which is what they're doing.
People wandered by and would stop by to see it.
Yeah. It. Because I didn't have an event permit.
I'd say one, the distinction here is there's an apparatus that's, you know, the tree has the lights, I assume they must stay on it. And so it's the tree that's growing there, it's like, I mean, we're partly, we're talking about taking an apparatus and putting it on the common. I'm totally in favor of this, but it's just a matter of, you know, our being aware that.
Something new is going there.
Something there and and then take it away again, which is.
And it doesn't really rise a level of an actual event.
No, no.
So, just use the same form, but yeah.
To the level of an event, but not to an event permit.
Not a permit, permit, um let me know whenever you're ready for the motion.
At the event, uh at the event, I mean, last year and like do it this year again, at the event itself, I use. Um real lights while we're there.
Sure.
And then, but you know, after half an hour, I put back in the bulbs.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay, perfect.
You ready? Motion. Mister Chair, I move to approve the placement of a menorah at the Stowe Lower Common from December twenty fourth to January third. And a lighting event, a lighting of the menorah event on December thirtieth, twenty twenty four at seven P M as requested by Leonard Golda.
Second.
For the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Let the record show unanimous.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we get to.
Now the one begins.
Yeah, well, let's do our common victual license renewals, I'll take that motion.
Ready? Alright, Mister Chair, I move to renew the town's common victular license for the following business for twenty twenty five. Stowe Cafe, one eighteen Great Road.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
We're gonna do them all one at a time?
No.
This is.
Oh, this is the one, sorry, sorry, sorry.
This is different.
Different, got it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Uh.
Aye.
Let the record show unanimous, I will take the next motion in totality, please.
Sure.
Um actually, with the exception of number five, can we just hold on that?
Hold on five?
Yes, please.
What about six? Is six in existence anymore?
Five and six.
Five and six then, yes, we can hold on both of those.
Uh huh.
Um I, Mister Chair, I move to renew the town's twenty twenty five liquor licenses for the following businesses. Twenty nine Culinary LLC, DBA Nans Market, two seventy one Great Road Package Store Wine and Malt. A L and B C Inc., eight Hudson Road Package Store, all alcohol. Fourth and Field, three O two Boxboro Road, on premises, all alcohol. Honey Pot Hill Orchard LLC, one thirty eight Sudbury Road Farmer Winery Pouring Permit. Nitro Spirits Inc., DBA Colonial Spirits of Stowe, one seventeen Great Road Package Store, all alcohol. Red River Rock Incorporated, DBA Red Ginger Restaurant, one seventeen Great Road, on premises, all alcohol. Robert Page the Third LLC, DBA Butternut Farm Golf Club, one fifteen Wheeler Road, on premises, all alcohol. Stowe Food and Beverage LLC, DBA Stowe Acres Country Club, fifty eight Randall Road, on premises, all alcohol. Wedgewood Country Club of Stowe Incorporated, DBA Wedgewood Pines Country Club, two fifteen Harvard Road, on premises, all alcohol.
Second.
And there is the note for all on premises licenses and inspection by the fire department building and commissioner has been completed and signed. Just so that's acknowledged publicly, okay? Um any discussion on those? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those have passed unanimously. Um I asked for a hold on number five, Stowe Golf. Um last year, they said that they would be moving on it soon. Have we received any information from the folks?
I have not heard from them, no.
Okay. I'm of the opinion, I don't like to withhold a license and ambush anybody. Um at all, um so I don't wanna do that. But I would ask that we per provision that we ask them to come in six months from now to tell us. What exactly they're planning on doing since they've held this license and done nothing with it for a decade. It's since twenty fourteen that they had closed the business down. Um so I'd liked an explanation at least or some sort of a plan or something.
I think, yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's a fair. We only have so many licenses to give and I think if we're really trying to increase businesses in town, then we probably, we just need to know.
What's happening.
What's happening with the licenses.
But I don't wanna penalize them, they're not here.
I get it, I don't, I don't, I don't, I agree with you, I don't think we need to, we should, we're in a position to.
Right, so I would just ask six months, yep.
So we did get an explanation from them last year. We had them come in and they gave us an explanation of their circumstances and. I suspect it's a slow moving train. So I propose that perhaps as we have done with a with a victual earth license recently, that we. Give a license for a shorter period of time and ask for that visit. You know, so if we can, can't really do it with a liquor license?
Not, cause it falls under the A B C C, so I think, I think based on what the Chair is suggesting, he's suggesting. Approve their license, but ask them to come in in six months in anticipation of the twenty twenty six license renewals, is that?
Sure.
Correct, so that.
So that they have a license for the year, but then there'll be some discussion leading up to next year's.
My point of order, um are we required to to renew this license in a certain period of time?
Yes.
So this is it.
Tonight's. Yeah.
That's it.
Has to, well, it has to be renewed by the end of December, this is your last meeting. So unless you wanted to have a special meeting to discuss this license, it would have to be tonight.
We were just celebrating not having any more meetings.
So Courtney?
Uh so, no, I would not like that, uh it's fine, thank you, I I'm apprised.
So if everyone is in agreement to have them come in in six months, could I ask that we reach out to them and let them know? Um so there's the expectation.
Yep.
Um when they come in, that we would like to see an actual plan. Um it with, you know, dates of moving things forward and what's happening and things of that nature so that uh.
Is that a motion that the board's gonna vote on, to have a plan?
Well, the other question is.
Great motion.
Consequences if they don't.
I'm sorry?
What are the consequences if they don't?
Um I'm of the opinion if they don't come in with an actual plan and it's just a lingering thing that. We don't renew in twenty twenty six.
I think. I would have a question of the legality of that, given the fact that 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 this board that's having this discussion right now is not going to be. This board that's gonna be having this discussion in twenty twenty six, so I think we we would have to be real careful about. Saying what this board would be deciding for them then, so you can say that. But I think that like however we say that, we just need to be real careful about. I I mean, I would wa- I would like some guidance, like legally, as to. What we are actually allowed to to do, just.
We've avoided punitive language.
Right.
In the motions and this would almost sound like we'd be adding punitive language to the.
Yeah.
I have a proposal. Sure, we renew the license. And we contact the business owner during the year and ask to have a conversation about the future of their license.
That's why I asked them to come in.
That's what you proposed.
You're asking for a plan and I don't think it's appropriate for us to monitor someone's business plan. So I don't have a problem with them coming in and speaking with us about things. But I don't know that I would want to see a business plan with dates, everything we can't approve for.
So I think what Courtney was also proposing is that the motion just say, we approve the license.
We approve that.
Period.
Right.
And then come next year.
Have a question beforehand.
Full stop.
It'd be nice if, yeah.
Later in the year or in the new year, you get in touch with with the.
With us.
With the business owner and ask for a conversation.
And it's a fair thing to say to them, we don't have.
Well, you had the conversation last year, I have the meeting minutes. You have, well, you had the conversation last year. I have the meeting minutes in front of me right here and they said. That they would be coming in and intends to reopen soon. I think we have the right to ask.
We can ask.
But did we, did we reach out to them and ask them to come back in?
You said you wanted a plan with dates. That's what I'm objecting to. I have no objection to having them come in and update us. And telling them that we only have a limited number of liquor licenses and we can't keep holding one for them. I have no problem with that. I just don't want to ask them for a plan with dates. I just don't think that's appropriate.
I don't think it should be tied to the motion as all.
I think that it could be possible that if a business owner were looking around for a place to open up. And they saw that there were no available liquor licenses, they would keep moving. Whereas if there were an unspoken for liquor license, they might. Stop here and and proceed to investigate. And that's what we need to convey.
Correct. I agree with that, yes.
To the law, is that they're preventing us from perhaps having other development.
Right.
And if they would like to have a liquor license at some future date, then let's hope that there's an opening for them to do so and and.
And to go through the process again and and go after the liquor license itself.
Right. Yeah. Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement on that. I just don't.
I think so, yeah.
We just don't think it should be in the motion.
Mm hmm.
No.
All right.
Shouldn't be in the motion.
Sorry.
We don't think so. Okay, do we have a potential motion?
May I?
You give it a shot.
Great. Uh, Mister Chair, I move to renew. The town's twenty twenty five liquor license for Jay Malone and so Sons, DBA Stow Away Golf, one twenty one Way Pond Road On Premise Wine and Malt.
Second.
Further discussion?
We'd like to see some more information over the course of the year as to what might happen with that.
I think we can add to the motion that we can, should invite them in six months from now. Let them know that we're expecting them to at least come in and have a conversation.
It was discussion. I didn't want to add it to the motion. I'm just adding it to the discussion.
I don't, I don't want to do that.
Yeah, I want to add it to the motion.
I think the amendment fails.
I wasn't looking for an amendment. I was just discussing.
I can just reach out and ask them to come in after the board. So if there's concerns about a different board, it would be probably June after the election.
Yeah.
If there's any change on the board. That way they're having a discussion with what will be the voting authority come next December.
So do you want to call the vote, Mister Chair, as read?
Sure.
Did we beat you up enough?
I I'm just trying to look out for the benefit of the town, but also trying to not blindside a business.
You are looking out and you did good. We just don't like your approach.
But I do think we are owed an explanation.
Yeah.
It's a decade.
Is anyone disagreeing?
It's within the period.
It's a decade.
Anyone disagreeing with you here?
I just wanted something on.
I want to hear one word, yes or no.
Yes, my question is, do you have a question?
Anyone? I'm disagreeing with the former.
Would you call a question?
I disagree.
Call the damn vote.
Call the question.
We all moved to call the question.
It's up to the chair to do that. Thank you.
Yeah, we're all waiting on you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Fine, let it show unanimous.
Number six.
Uh, yeah. That one got held, uh.
Do you have more information on?
Do you have more information?
So they have asked to renew their license. Um, I think they're still going through some decisions on what the future of that property would look like. Um, they're spending some, a significant amount of money to upgrade their own water system, which has been part of the issue. I think once that's done, they will reevaluate if there, it's a viable store. Uh, we've talked to them about perhaps a sandwich shop. We don't really know what they will have the capacity to do when and if. Their system is upgraded, but they have asked to extend it for a year to see what happens. The other opportunity would be is if they do look to sell, uh, having a license already is a hot commodity. So it would make it more enticing if they wanted to sell the property.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
May I make a motion?
Sure.
Uh, Mister Chair, I move to renew the town's twenty twenty five liquor license for Jay Salamoni Enterprises Incorporated, DBA. Russell's Convenience Store of Stowe, three ninety Great Road Package Store Wine and Malt.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I do have one quick question. How is it determined how many licenses the town has?
So it's the state, um, and I I meant to look it up and I didn't have a chance. Um, so we have, it's based on population. Uh, they do now allow special legislation. So if we were at capacity, we could petition the legislature to add additional liquor licenses. Um, we are not at capacity, uh, in all categories. So I, we do have some flexibility. I don't know at the, uh, wine and malt though. Um, if we have, which is the one that, um. Stow Away has. I don't know if we have any additional ones in that category, but I'll make sure I get that for you all. But it's it's determined by the state.
Great.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, let the record show it's unanimous. Uh, yes, actually, why don't we start the round robin of signatures while we're finishing up since we have a vast majority of them that. We have to go through.
Oh, I get to start.
You get to start.
I mean, I'd love to.
Next, we have authorize and sign the anticipation note renewal for the water system.
Ross, he's a Townsend. He's a Townsend.
Yeah.
I'll take a motion on that.
Motion on the bond.
Oh, Freddie, uh, Mister Chair, I move to authorize and sign the bond anticipation note renewal for the water system as presented at this meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record show it's unanimous. Uh, okay, uh, vote to extend the useful life of the fire truck authorized at the twenty twenty four annual town meeting. Motion, please.
All right. Mister Chair, voted that the maximum useful life of the department equipment listed below to be financed with the proceeds of the nine hundred and ninety thousand dollar borrowing. Authorized by the vote of the town passed May eleventh, twenty twenty four, Article thirty seven. Is hereby determined pursuant to general law, chapter forty four, section seven. One, to be as follows. Purpose, fire engine. Borrowing amount, nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Maximum useful life, fifteen years. I further certify that a vote was taken at a meeting open to the public, that such vote was not taken by secret ballot. That a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above vote. Was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously but visible to the public. At all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located. Or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the attorney general. As set for in nine, is set forth in nine hundred and forty. C M R twenty nine point oh three two B at. At least forty eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays. Prior to the time of the meeting and remained so posted at the time of the meeting. That no deliberations or decision in connection with the subject matter of this vote were taken in executive session. All in accordance with general law, chapter thirty A, sections eighteen to twenty five as amended.
Second. Torture.
Kudos. Um, discussion. Explanation.
So, um. Normally departmental equipment with, which this is considered has a useful life of five years under mass general law for borrowing purposes. Obviously, a fire engine has a much longer term. This would allow us when we go out to borrow that nine hundred and ninety thousand to extend the term to fifteen years to spread out the tax burden to the taxpayers who are paying for that. Uh, just as an update, we spoke with the fire chief this morning and this truck is due in, um, March. Uh, so they are building it.
Really?
This is one of the lucky ones. So they are finished building it and they are hoping to have it delivered in March.
Aye.
Which would be great. The ambulance, we are still waiting on for several years, but the fire engine should be.
The ambulance, another bucket truck?
Yes.
How many years to get the bucket truck?
Oh, I see.
Um, okay, any comments or questions? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
And it's a good idea.
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record show it is unanimous. Oh, madam, do we have to do a roll call on that one? We don't, okay. I wasn't sure. Um, okay, um, meeting minutes.
Uh, Mister Chair, I move to accept the meeting minutes of the November twenty sixth, twenty twenty four meeting.
Second.
Comments, discussions?
Yay, Joyce.
They were good.
Yay job.
As always. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record show it is unanimous. Uh, board correspondence.
Lots of permits.
I was real glad to see the master's academy permits.
Yep.
Yeah.
Done. That was exciting.
That's huge and exciting, so kudos.
So disappointed we're not getting a holiday.
Planning board.
To the planning board.
Yes.
Yes, kudos to the planning board.
Oh, really?
And the Z B A.
And the Z B A.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they were involved with, between the two boards really moving that along.
Yep.
They did a lot of work.
A lot of work in a short period of time.
What else, what else we have?
Well, the applicant also was.
Very prepared.
Most.
Yes.
Answering questions and being responsive.
And presenting, yes.
Absolutely. They were.
I thought they were really.
Clearly motivated, yeah.
And I will keep you posted because we should have a decision on USA fencing this coming weekend. We will know more.
Okay.
I'll I'll be honest, the state's not as forthcoming as offering support other than letters, so I'm not, I'm not really sure, but it is down to us and, um, one college on Staten Island.
Hmm.
I will let you know.
Okay.
Disappointed we didn't get holiday letters from Verizon.
I'll take one last motion.
Uh, Mister Chair, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Very much.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, that's right.